We're going to call to order this meeting of the joint, meeting of the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors and the School Board. Let the record show that four or five supervisors are here. Mr. Melton is unavailable to attend.
Now can you hear me? Okay. I call this meeting of the School Board to order September 18th, 2019. And let the record reflect that we are all here except for Joe Walters, who is not able to be here for personal reasons.
And. Mr. Voorhees is going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cole, would you like to lead us in education?
Sure. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunities which we enjoy in this country and we ask that we are good stewards at our bounty. We ask that you guide us tonight and bless us in our deliberations. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Are there any requests to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentation?
Madam Chair.
From the board? Yes, sir.
I have two additions I would like to make under seven B. I'd like to add under seven A, seven B, a discussion of the schools, CIP, specifically two items, the land acquisition for a new elementary school and the addition to the existing high school. Secondly, I'd like to add under nine, or excuse me, under eight, AC, for discussion of inviting Dr. Christopher Ali, who is a tenured professor at UVA. He was on Congressman Spanberger's panel for the discussion of broadband recently. I met with him at the invitation of Mr. Cox after that meeting. Karen Carmack and Mike Violette joined as well. We spent about an hour and a half with him. He was extremely informative. I would like to have him come down and have a conversation with the board. I think it would be very beneficial to us at this time. So those are my two requests, Madam Chair.
Any School Board requests? All righty. Then is there any discussion on those additions by Mr. Williams? Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I guess that's the formal. Do we have to vote again on the formal approval of the agenda or that was it?
To add the additions and deletions, then you approve the agenda.
Okay. So number five. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
It's amended, Madam Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. This brings us to our first public comment period. Three minutes for an individual, five minutes if you're speaking as a group. Please sign in below and remember the guidelines that we always have regarding these. If you'd like to make a comment, please come on down. Seeing none, we'll close this public comment period and move into item seven A, Powhatan County Legislative Priorities for the 2020 General Assembly. Who's going to handle this one?
Madam Chair, I think the way we had in the past approached this was to invite our members of the General Assembly up to sit with us here. We don't really have space up on the dais, but we have a microphone and some chairs down there. And then invite some conversation from the delegation about their expectations for the upcoming General Assembly. We've heard things in the past about whether it's going to be a tight budget year or there's a particular issue that's sort of driving debate or the policy agenda, that sort of thing. We know it's an election year, so we expect that there'll be some waiting for kind of the results of that to set some of the agenda perhaps, but there may be some general understanding that our delegation could share with us. And then after that, we would shift to reviewing the county government agenda, which the board has drafted and preliminarily approved in a previous meeting, and then shift to the School Board's interests following that, which they have also looked at preliminarily. So that's my suggestion of how to proceed, Madam Chair.
Okay. Does the School Board have anything they would like to? That sounds good. Thank you.
So with that, Delegate Ware and Senator Sturdivant, would you be so kind as to join us up here and share your wisdom about the General Assembly's 2020 session with us? We'd be very interested.
Thank you. Well, good evening. Can you all hear me okay?
We can hear you. Can you hear back there?
No.
No, a little louder, Glenn. Thank you.
How's that? Good evening. It's great to be with you all again this year and with Delegate Ware. Glenn Sturdivant represents you, Powhatan and the State Senate, along with Chesterfield and the city of Richmond. And as was mentioned by Mr. Voorhees, we are headed into the 2020 General Assembly session starting in January because that is an even-numbered year. We will be working on the two-year biennial budget to run state government for the coming two years. And so that will be a 60-day-long session, as you know. And that's an especially important year for a lot of the items that I know you care about and we care about for Powhatan, to work to try to get those things covered in the budget. The governor will introduce his proposed budget in December. And then we will begin the General Assembly session in early January. I know several of the things that are on your legislative agenda, such as expanding rural broadband, are very important to Delegate Ware and I. I have worked to get onto the Broadband Advisory Council. And we just had a meeting downtown in Richmond today. And this is a council that looks at how the fund that we have created in the General Assembly, that's about $20 million, to allow localities to partner with the private sector and to leverage that grant funding to expand broadband in rural areas. They're doing some very exciting things, and I'm hopeful that I can share some of the materials that I got there with you as you all over the next year perhaps consider doing some of those, taking on some of those projects to be able to get access to some of that grant money.
Thank you, Glenn. And it's good to be back with you. Thank you for the invitation and the chance to tell you a little bit about what we anticipate and to have a conversation, which I always gain from in hearing what you have to say and the things that you're seeing at the county level. The election, as Mr. Voorhees said, is certainly the first thing, and the results of that will certainly potentially have a significant effect on the trajectory of the 2020 session. Both chambers, as you know, are very close in terms of the partisan balance. There's a lot of interest, both in Virginia and beyond, as to the results, and the results could have a significant difference. Let me give you a couple specifics that I think will bring it home in terms of local government. Two years ago, when the House only was up, unlike this year when it's both chambers, there were 16 new members. Of them, two had local government experience, two. That means 14 that had not been in a School Board or on a City Council or Board of Supervisors. One of them was defeated for reelection in a primary this spring, so he will be gone. The longtime chairman of the House County Cities and Towns Committee, which reviews many of the topics about which we'll talk, at one time represented a part of Powhatan, former Hopewell Mayor Riley Ingram. After 20-plus years, he is retiring. So that'll be a big change. There are significant changes without any, beyond the election, and certainly I would anticipate that there will be changes from that standpoint. As has been implicated in several of the comments so far, this is a budget year. We do a two-year state budget and come back the second year to make revisions. So we will take a look and set at what the governor presents to us in mid-December and then move from there. This year, being that biennial budget year, there are two big drivers. The Secretary of Finance said yesterday what he's indicated to us before. There are two large drivers that have been going 5% to 7% a year in terms of what we do, and that is SOQs, re-benchmarking for local school divisions. That is as big a single driver as any with one exception, and that is Medicaid. Healthcare costs continue to be a significant factor. We have, as probably most of you know, adopted not only Medicaid but Medicaid expansion. And in every state where that has been the case, there have been hundreds of millions of cost under projections, let's put it that way. In other words, there have been more expenses than were anticipated. That too is growing at a rate of 5% to 7%. Our revenues are roughly 3.5%. Where the private economy is moving along very steadily in Virginia as other places. There are a few clouds on the horizon, but in general, we've been doing very well, much like the rest of the country in our economy. One sort of specific thing in that regard, which could have an effect, I think, on school funding, is the steady growth of various forms of gaming or gambling. There's been, was a request last year from three of our most challenged regions, Bristol, Portsmouth, and Danville, to open casinos. We chose not to move forward immediately on that. There's a study ongoing with our J-Lark that will look at that. But already, the State Lottery of Virginia is seeing some indicators, before casinos even come online, that other gaming options, both online and where there are physical games, that you've probably seen some of those stories, that is already cutting into our lottery revenues. And that, as you know, is dedicated solely to education. So that too is a potential factor. And for me, that's something that I'm going to be looking at, considering as we look at the options. That's one thing that I think has to be an important consideration as we consider various forms of gaming. I think that's kind of a big-picture look at some of the things that I would anticipate and be glad to hear from you, what you've brought to our attention.
Thank you very much for that overview. So at this point, I think we would like to move forward to the discussion of the county legislative agenda. The board has tried to prioritize, knowing that getting one or two high-priority items attended to certainly has a better chance of success than throwing 50 or 60 top priorities at you. You know, if everything's a priority, then nothing's a priority. And so my suggestion would be that we work through the county shortlist and seek a reaction from our two members. And certainly if there are board members who'd like to add to my comments, we could benefit from that as well. So our first priority that the board took up was broadband, and that was alluded to earlier. Affordable access to high-speed Internet services really remains an elusive goal for much of rural Virginia. Increasingly, we're told developing unique partnerships is the solution. That may be the case and has been somewhat successful, I would say of limited success in some communities where they sort of cobble together a unique set of circumstances to approach the problem. But I think what we're seeing as those examples move forward is it tends to leave the rest of the Commonwealth further and further behind. If you sort of cherry-pick the most feasible portions of a community for service, then those that are not as feasible are even harder to serve next time you look for a unique partnership. We, I think I got a message from a board member recently referring to a Center for Innovative Technology report that this board received some years ago that had a list, kind of a laundry list, of different funding opportunities. And I was asked to comment as to why we hadn't moved forward with any of them. And as I looked through the list, many of them just don't apply to our situation. And examples include seeking funding from the Appalachian Regional Commission. We're not in that zone. The Tobacco Commission, we're not in that zone. Federal funding partners, we don't have any federal facilities in our county. And I really hated to provide the answer that, gee, this just doesn't work. I'd rather find positive solutions than just say it doesn't work for us. But the fact is that the number-one obstacle for us is a lack of capital, and it just doesn't pencil out for the private sector. They just can't make money with the capital investment over a less densely populated area. And our policy goal, from a planning perspective, you know, tends toward the idea of rural preservation, valuing our open spaces. In that situation, I'm not sure that we're looking to densify in a way that would make providing rural broadband more cost-efficient for the private sector. So that just kind of puts us back to the model that was successful some years ago, which was to provide rural electrification and later rural telephone service through a broad national and state policy approach. I've been suggesting that this is our real, you know, national solution for a number of years, but that doesn't seem to be taking hold. So that's just sort of my thoughts on it. In the meantime, I certainly recognize the governor and the legislature providing higher levels of funding this past year for the most useful grant process for Powhatan, which is the VADI grants. We have not successfully applied for one yet. We've applied twice. We are required to have an Internet service provider partner in order to apply, and that remains elusive for us because it is a known difficult-to-serv area. There are a few firms that are willing to step up and say, hey, we'll do it with you. It might be worthwhile to consider allowing local jurisdictions to apply to these, for that particular grant program, or maybe a parallel grant program without an ISP. I know it's a bit of wishful thinking, but maybe if we were to get the grant, that would then demonstrate to an ISP that we have money in hand and invite them to partner with us for an actual build. So that's a thought. We, for the board's information, something that we're working on actually is we've got a meeting scheduled next month with Goochlin, I believe, Louisa, and Hanover to talk about a possible competition of some sort where we all put some capital dollars into a prize pot, if you will, and try to entice a small ISP into our region with knowledge that there's actual capital involved. So far, our jurisdiction has not been able to put any capital up front, so when we talk about trying to attract ISPs, they kind of, they know they've got to bring the checkbook. And that doesn't change the math for them. I think I've said plenty on this. I'm certainly interested if board members wish to add to the comments or if our delegation has any reaction to these thoughts.
I've got a question for the county administrator. You said that we were going to be meeting with Cumberland. What was the other county, Goochlin?
Goochlin, they've, I, it is Goochlin. I believe Goochlin has also invited Louisa. We've also spoken to Hanover.
The reason I'm asking you, the inclusion of Cumberland, it's my understanding that Cumberland is going to be covered through that consortium of co-ops, where they're going to be actually bringing fiber to the home in Cumberland. So I'm curious as to why they would be putting up money if that's supposedly going to happen.
I didn't, I didn't actually mention them. I, yes, sir.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I attended the broadband summit a month or so back, and the two items I brought up there, which I'll bring up again in case you haven't heard, there's a couple of barriers where the existing Internet service providers, I think buried in the fine print, you're looking at about a 250-foot maximum length that they'll run from the road to a residence. And in a rural county such as Powhatan, my driveway is 750 feet. And maybe on the long side, but I think a lot of times you're going to have more than a 250-foot run. So I think that there might need to be some incentive from the state level to, you know, broaden that distance, let them cost-share, however it may be handled. And the other item, you have the Norfolk Southern Railway running through the county, and there's hundreds of private crossings that I have Comcast on the one side of the road. I can't get, they will not go under Norfolk Southern tracks, and this is a barrier that the railroads put up. So, you know, on a state level, I think you could service a lot of people by helping break down that barrier where there's existing service, but you just can't get it from point A to point B.
Mr. Kunk, I would just add comment that I mentioned that to representatives from, staff from Representative Spanberger's office at the broadband summit she held in Louisa and Mineral last month. Federal legislation, state legislation, anybody that would direct the railroads to not abuse their right-of-way because they are, in fact, and you could talk to colleagues of mine nationwide, the railroads are the hardest-to-deal-with entity that have rights-of-way and condemnation authority of any that we deal with. There are bar none, utility companies, we usually work something out. The railroads are embarrassingly difficult to deal with, and they are a barrier to working out problems like this.
So we addressed that very issue today at the broadband commission downtown. And so we will be introducing legislation this coming session to cap the fees that the railroads can put on the crossings and to help streamline that process a little bit more because we have heard, not just from Internet service providers but co-ops as well, that the ability to run the line across the tracks can take, can be thousands and thousands of dollars and take six months from start to finish just to run one line across the track. So we are working on a state solution for that very issue this coming session. And the other thing I would, I know that you all are very closely connected with your neighbors and the state lobbying organization that represents local governments. But, you know, there are, in this current grant year, Fluvanna was able to get $641,000 to expand broadband in their county. Louisa, $230,000. Halifax, $231,000. Floyd County, $348,000. But what I think the common thread with all of these, all of these localities is that they're also putting money up to help get access to that grant money.
Wasn't, wasn't they, didn't they also have a partner?
Some of them may have. Some of these are regional, and that's, I think, another aspect of the application that VADI looks favorably on, of these regional partnerships. Oh, but in terms of a service provider, I assume, as Mr. Voorhees said, that must, that is a requirement. But, you know, these are all, again, all similarly situated counties in terms of their rural nature.
But they had service providers that were willing to participate in the ring.
That's right.
And we've tried that. You know, staff, county administrator, it's actively searched, you know, for a partner.
There's not out there that we've been able to surface up till now.
I would just build on that by mentioning that the awards, Amherst County received an award and their partners, SCS Broadband. Halifax is also SCS Broadband. Louisa is SCS Broadband. You know, I'm reluctant to disparage any company in public, so I won't. But we have not been successful with SCS's commitments to us. For a couple of years, they committed to an installation and failed to deliver on it. And they've also failed to deliver on commitments to some of our regional governments like Charles City and New Kent. So I'm, I'll be skeptical if those grants are actually successfully implemented based on past performance.
I represent Western Goochlin and Eastern Fluvanna, which are the most rural sections of both of those counties, and a fairly rural part of Chesterfield, which also has pockets that are not covered, interestingly enough. And you're exactly correct, correct, Mr. Williams, that the, in Fluvanna, I was up there for the dedication of a section that's going to roll out over the course of coming months to 700 rural consumers. And it's going through a subsidiary called Firefly of Central Virginia Electric Cooperative. They have really worked hard. I've been in touch with both Gary Wood, who's the president there, and the president at Southside. They, of course, have to be careful because they're a member-owned cooperative. They can't go beyond what their capital capacities are. But at the same time, there are some of them that are really looking hard, and I've been in touch with them as one of the possible partners, certainly in Western Powhatan, where we have a lot of Southside customers. That's an option. That's a rural area. They've got to be careful not to get out too far over their skis, as it were. But they're going, it's moving, and it will eventually come. That particular line will get to Cartersville, not the whole of Cumberland, but it'll be in that segment of Cumberland. And there's hope then eventually it'll be some time yet before it gets to Goochlin. So that's one of the potential options, is the electric cooperatives. Again, the capital costs, as have been alluded to, are the big challenge. We've done a couple of things recently to encourage providers. A couple of years ago, I think it was two years ago, we passed legislation that limits the time between an application and permission being granted. It gives, it puts a hard cap or limit on how long localities can have to grant a permit and what costs they can impose for a permit. That was one of the things we did. We did it at the request of the providers, not so much for rural localities. My experience is that in general, you all have not, you've been eagerly working with people that are willing to work with you on this. But there are places in Virginia where it has been much more difficult, both in time and money. And the provider said, if you can help us reduce those two things, we can defend putting capital into Virginia as the Commonwealth, by contrast with some of our sister states. And so we've worked on that. And I also asked for an amendment at the request of VACO to require an annual report of what places have been served that were not heretofore served as a result of this change in the statutory or the regulatory environment in Virginia. So that's, that will be forthcoming. I will tell you, I hear nothing about which people care, well, that's maybe not fair to say, but very little about which they care more when I go down long driveways. served as a result of this change in the statutory or the regulatory environment in Virginia. So that's, that will be forthcoming. I will tell you, I hear nothing about which people care, well, that's maybe not fair to say, but very little about which they care more when I go out, go down long driveways in Western Goochlin and Eastern Fluvanna and Western Powhatan than we need broadband, we need some kind of consistent access for all the reasons that I don't have to retail to this body.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you again both for being here, Delegate Ware, Senator Sturdivant. I have a hard time not calling you Lee and Glenn, but I'll try to get through here. Thanks for your efforts on broadband and I, I'm going to second a couple of things that both of you have said and I just want to drive it home so that people in Powhatan know we've been working on this. I, I think every board member has done something to try to bring broadband here, so this isn't something I've just done, but I can tell you my experience, I get hammered by constituents every week. Last night or early this morning, at 1:00 AM, I got a Facebook message from somebody, it was about broadband. So we're actually losing sleep over this issue and it's not, it's getting hotter in here, not cooler, as this issue goes on. There's two things, well, I've sat down with the, the big providers, I've sat down with small people doing a co-op kind of thing and Southside Electric has pitched in and et cetera, and we know about SCS. Looked at a couple of other companies to see if they could do the last mile up to the doorknob as Mr. Kunkka was talking about. So we've been down these many paths and I have come to the conclusion, Powhatan County needs two things, money and action. It's been five years and I've been telling my constituents, which are also your constituents, it's coming, but we're working on it. Broadband's coming. It's, we're working hard, we're working hard at the local level. I'm sure they're talking about it in Richmond. But it's been five years. That's a long time for somebody and it's not just, here's my final point, I guess, we need more sweeping action from Richmond. We can't do it here in Powhatan. We just don't have the resources. We don't have the draw. So thank you for your prior efforts, but we need bigger and more. That's how I see it from my point of view. It's not just that people are inconvenienced and they can't get online or they can't download something as quickly as I could on mine. It's an economic impact, it's a homework assignment impact, so we're impacting education. There are so many issues now wrapped up. People are not moving to District Two because we can't provide them with high-speed broadband internet service and they're moving out of District Two for the same reason. I, I've kept the emails, but trust me, this is impacting Southeast Powhatan County in a fairly significant way. And I, I'm getting tired of promising that the day is coming when they'll have it because I'm just not sure that's happening. Thank you.
And that's exactly why we put more money into the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative. I guess I would, I would suggest maybe go and reach out to those localities that are far more rural than Powhatan and that are able to find a service provider and are able to get access to these funds because there may be, may be other opportunities that are being missed to get access to that money. But we, we've heard Jim, we're acting on it.
So I think we've hit that pretty hard and I would just, since we have an audience at home, mention that we are still awaiting our, the results of our grant application. We did apply to the USDA Rural Utility Service Reconnect Grant. That's, that was a $7 million grant application and this is about the time that folks are expecting to hear the results. That would serve a, a significant portion of southwestern Powhatan, but there's still, still much to be done. So let me just move on to our, our next item and that is proffers. And I'll just, let me mention them all, all the remaining items, because we, we don't want to necessarily take up the whole night on, on, on this list, but, so I'll briefly mention it. It's proffers, the future of the Beaumont Juvenile Correction Facility, the, some issues related to the Green Ridge landfill siting, and then reimbursement for local, the local share of DSS Administrative Services. Those are the items. So just briefly back to proffers, we had a pretty comprehensive discussion on this matter last year with the recognition that prior amendments to the proffer laws had caused local governments a lot of concern about whether they could still legally effectuate proffers without sort of creating some legal jeopardy. And so there were some interest in clarifying the proffer laws. Goochlin County had a, a bill that they put together that Delegate Ware, I know you, you carried, and there were some other proposals from the Home Builders Association, interestingly, because I think they had seen that maybe the, the previous law had gone a little bit too far. Anything we need to know about where those might fare, that issue might fare upcoming?
Yeah, I appreciate that and we, we talked about this, we did talk about it last year as well and Goochlin did request it and I carried that legislation. And as you said very ably, there was an alternative piece, let me back up a little before that, two or three years ago, there was a, a, sort of a bill, bill that was put forward by the home builders primarily that, that edged things in their direction and in my judgment too far, I voted against it. It, it went in their direction excessively. So last year, throughout the year, the home builders met with quite a few folks, various counties, I don't, I can't remember if they came to Powhatan or not, but they came to quite a few counties to, to recognizing that they'd overreached. And so there was a sort of consensus bill that came out of that between the Association of Counties, VML, and the home builders. And then there was the Goochlin bill that probably went even a little further that you all endorsed last year and that I was pleased to carry. Ultimately, the, the other bill was the one that became the vehicle to pass. It has gone into effect, hopefully it has made things better for the localities and I hope you all have had that experience. That, that was the way it was presented to us and both the folks who testified for VACO and several specific localities that testified, along with the home builders, said that this was a, a compromise that brought things, brought the pendulum back closer to the fast-growing localities to do more of what you need to do. So that's, that's going forward and I will note, just for the record, Goochlin did not request that, their bill this year, so I, I probably, I, I think it may be, I, I'm not sure that I would carry it again this year with there being the, that significant compromise bill that, that went in last year.
I think I would, on behalf of the staff, confess that we, we haven't had maybe enough experience with the changed law to comment as to whether we think it's effective or not. It's, we just haven't had that many cases since it went into effect, but.
Well, let me, let me just comment, Delegate Ware, you know, thank you for your efforts on that. I appreciate that. And the new law is better, but there are still significant issues outstanding with that law. For example, definitions that haven't been fleshed out in the courts. What constitutes capacity? You know, is it that rezoning that comes in that night that trips the school enrollment? You know, by, you know, right now, if the school's maximum capacity was 299 and they were at 299, you had a rezoning where the applicant comes in. At what point? I mean, if they went over capacity with their rezoning by 20 people, does that mean a new high school, a new elementary school? Does that mean an addition? Those things haven't been fleshed out. We still don't know. So I know people are waiting for some court cases maybe to come through to give some definition of that, but that's where we're at today. We still don't know how to interpret that within the legal framework of the Code of Virginia. Just a comment.
The next item is related to the Beaumont Juvenile Correction Facility and for the viewers at home, this was addressed in a, in, in a piece of the budget bill. Essentially Beaumont has closed as a juvenile correction facility and the state has not decided what the next use would be for that facility. There's some interest expressed by Department of Corrections, that's the, the department we know that has the most interest in it. Powhatan County has sought either to acquire that property and use it for economic development or other public purposes, should the state not wish to retain it, or at least be consulted for some ancillary uses. We, we are interested in citing a public safety training facility jointly with Goochlin and potentially invite some other regional partners like Cumberland and Amelia to be able to use it. We are also interested in enhancing the access to the Powhatan State Park. As you know, the current entrance off of 522 has a little bit of a sight distance problem and is a, a pretty narrow road and there are some folks who travel in there with trailers and RVs and such, so potentially another entrance, some additional riverfront could be added to that park as well through a realignment of that property. So those are the kinds of things. We also know that our DOC folks use a lot of that land for raising crops for the State Farm Program. We think those are compatible regardless of ownership. So we're looking for a partnership here and I think at the last minute, the budget language was removed through some intervention by General Services or the Governor's Office. So we've heard that some more interaction might yield a more positive outcome. At the same time, we know the state needs to consider really where they want to go with it before they're willing to, to, to make a decision. So it's a bit in flux, but we'd like to keep that ball in play. It is a pretty high-profile piece of property and we, we'd like to see a higher and better use than vacant.
And if I might add, Senator Sturdivant and Delegate Ware, we have one MGD parked over there that we were able to get the lines, as you recall, from the intake over the corrections center. And so now that we, we have those lines, you know, underneath 522, we have the opportunity to use that water for development, you know, for an industrial park or something like that. So we're keenly interested in, in being able to do something with that piece of property. Thank you.
And, and we concur and agree with you. I think this is our second, second cycle, working to get that language in the budget and I think it's going to require the executive branch, the governor and, and DGS coming around and being willing to part with that property. I don't know if, if, if Powhatan has been in a position to make an offer to purchase or not, but I think that would always, that would certainly help, help the process. I think that the challenge will be is, is the state getting to the decision-making point of parting with it or not for no compensation, I think is, is, is the challenge.
Madam Phil?
Thank you for your comments. And then Greenledge, Green Ridge landfill, we know that's a local zoning decision that was made by Cumberland County, but there were some bills run to deal with secondary impacts to our community, mostly around transportation, but also around environmental impacts. So we continue to be interested in opportunities to make sure that transportation and environmental impacts are mitigated however possible, either through legislative or regulatory processes.
Well, I don't consider it a local zoning issue. I mean, I was driving here on Route 60 and there was a lot of traffic of just normal, everyday people driving home from work. And you add 500 trucks, big trash trucks for that, that's going to have a significant impact on Route 60 and surrounding areas. And so Delegate Ware and I fought this past session, as you know, along with many of you here and Supervisor Williams and others came down and, and supported us in efforts to try to help, help stop that process. And, and Lee and I are, are continuing to work to develop some options for this coming General Assembly session to, to work to continue to protect Powhatan citizens as it pertains to that landfill. And we recognize that it is a, it is a challenge. And, and so this, this summer Supervisor Williams and Karen Carmack and others and Delegate Ware and I met with VDOT and they have expanded their study of Route 60 to address a lot of the safety issues that these additional trash trucks and the traffic will pose. So that is ongoing. We were able to, they were originally going to do a much narrower study of it, they've now expanded that. And so at the very least, we would like to be able to get some things to help Powhatan mitigate the impact of this if we can't stop it altogether, in my opinion, or from my perspective.
It is, it's a huge potential public safety question that, that affects us probably more dramatically than Cumberland. And so we are both, have been at work on that and he mentioned the meeting we had with the Commissioner of VDOT to bring it to his attention. He had people from both of the look, the residencies because the, the Lynchburg residency covers Cumberland and the, our residency, as you know, is, is here in central Virginia. So you have two that, in the nature of any kind of bureaucracy, you, they're divided, but they are together in the sense that they've both been apprised of the concerns that we have. I will say I've also been in touch with the head of the Department of Environment and Quality to, to heighten his awareness of the significant concerns that I've had expressed by people who are up there and who have lived up there for years, who hunt across that land, who lived up there, plenty from Powhatan as well as Cumberland. So it's, I think there are significant questions and we are very much concerned, as I know many of you are, who are touched by it as well as our, our neighbors.
Thank you very much for that. And the final item that we have.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, can I add to that real quick? Thanks Delegate Ware for bringing up the environmental side. I know laser focusing on the transportation side, like what Senator Sturdivant and others, Mr. Williams worked on, that's smart because people can easily envision 500 trips up and down 60 and what that would do. However, just a suggestion, you may try to broaden that out this time when you're speaking with colleagues because people down in Hanover County or Henrico County, you know, Verina, they don't really care much about traffic in Powhatan County, to be frank, but they do care about the James River. And when you look at that environmental picture, which several citizens are working on right now, there's an organization and they're bringing some pretty good stuff to the table. If it's been a while since you looked into what they've come up with, you might want to revisit. Chesterfield County, Hanover County, Henrico County, Richmond City and everybody between here and the lighthouse as you go past Norfolk, et cetera, they should care about this issue because there's water that goes directly into the James from right there on that property. There's no, there's no 100% guarantee the contaminants won't go into the river, the groundwater, we're all on wells out here, that's huge. There's an earthen dam basically quote-unquote upstream. If we have another storm like Gaston or Isabel, if that dam fails, that would be a major, major environmental disaster with that landfill there. So to, like I said, it's just a suggestion, you do Richmond Hill, I don't, but if I were trying to build consensus with colleagues on Richmond Hill, I would talk about their backyard, not just Powhatan's backyard. So thanks for listening.
Very good. And the final item is a bit more of a technical budget item and our social service director, Sharon Rochelle, is here if we have questions about that. But essentially it has to do with the, the fact that our social But essentially, it has to do with the fact that our social services programs are state-supervised, locally administered, and we end up kind of midway through the year, running out of the state share of the funds, and it creates a lot of consternation at the local level about how you have to seek pass-through money and change your funding formulas mid-year. There's a lot of accounting involved, and Sharon, is there something else that you'd like to, would you like to address this issue? I think the mic at the podium would be appropriate, but I guess having a mid-fiscal year switch on how things are paid for is a bit frustrating for localities.
So coming from a program that was state-administered, county-operated, I was very surprised to see that midway through our fiscal year, our state portion disappeared around January, and we had to ask the state Virginia Department of Social Services for additional money to be able to pay for our administrative costs. So what I find is that the counties, and it's not just Palatine, but others, we're stripped. So when we're looking at new programs coming through the state that are mandated programs, but not funded, but require more staff, also the federal program with Families First coming, we're going to need to expand our preventive program. The state will finance any new positions for up to a half of a year, but after that, it's the counties that have to pick up that portion. So it goes from 15.5% to January 65%. And I think that's an undue burden on counties to be able to just have that come through. So I came from a program where our local share stayed the same for the entire year, and the federal and the state money stayed continuous for the year. So we were able to, when it came time to budget, we knew how many staff we could hire and what portion of that was going to come out of the local share. I find it difficult to be able to do that now because we just don't know. I went to the Virginia Department of Social Services Fiscal Department to ask the question, why do we run out of money? And the answer was, there's not enough money appropriated, and when the money's gone, it's gone, and so the counties have to take over that share.
This gives me a feeling of déjà vu all over again. When I was here, I served on the Social Services Board for eight years, and the challenge we had at that point was that we didn't get a sufficient amount to cover the rent from the county for the Social Services Department. So we, the county in effect, was subsidizing, and that's been, it's been some years ago. I was not aware of that, other than what I've been told several times is that with the expansion of Medicaid, there are probably more positions that local Social Services Departments are having to hire for, and that that was not a part of what came to us from Washington, so that we're going to have to do that. If you could send us, or send us an email that has that information, I'd be glad to put forward a budget amendment. That seems something that, for equitability, we ought to be covering.
And I think you know there's new legislation that's forward right now, saying that this Department of Social Services at the state level is given the authority to come in and take over a local Department of Social Services if they deem it necessary. So, you know, I think, this is just my opinion of the way things are looking, I think they might be moving towards a state system altogether. So then my second part of that is, what I worry about is if it is state-administered and operated, what say will the counties have on what their local share is going to be, because it'll be the state calling the shots totally. So it's just, I know it might be down the road, but it is of concern to me.
That has been a concern off and on, and I will tell you, I would steadfastly resist it, because given the populations that you serve, I think it's fundamentally important to have people that they can appeal to and come to, that they know locally.
I agree. I think we know our citizens, and I can probably speak for most counties. We know our areas, and we're all a little bit different, and I think we have the expertise to be able to serve the community, the children, and the families best.
Well, thank you very much, Sharon. Unless there are other questions from board members, that's all the staff has to present, and that is the list that the board has put forward.
Okay. We'll move forward with the school board's legislative slate. I'll have Dr. Jones go over that, and then if the school board members have other things to add to it, we'll hear them after.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First of all, to Senator Sturdivant and Delegate Ware, thank you for your support of public education and the Commonwealth. Last session was a very good one, with some very good gains made, both in teacher salaries, which is a major issue, but also teacher licensure, teacher, the teacher pipeline to combat teacher shortage, and several other areas. So we appreciate your support, as always. I've got a handout, and there's copies in the back if the public didn't see them, but I'll go through them quickly. There's nothing here that's really new. Several of these items, we've talked about for a few years. Delegate Ware mentioned re-benchmarking, which is kind of that first topic, and what we would ask, as we've asked for the last few years, is that support cap, support staff cap that was instituted during the Great Recession, that that be considered to be lifted. We're seeing mental health and wellness being a larger and larger issue with our students, and having staff that can work directly with them, such as instructional assistants, can make a huge difference for a student's success, especially a student in need. We'd also like to ask that any funding that comes for new positions, and I'll use the funding that was approved last year for guidance counselors, that that be appropriated by function instead of by job title, so that we have some flexibility in terms of what the local school division needs for that. I'll give you an example. We felt like we were in a pretty good position when it came to guidance counselors in terms of our staff ratio, but what we needed was social worker or school psychologist to work with those students that had more needs, and a lot of guidance counselors don't have the certification or the background to do that kind of work. So we would have preferred to use that extra funding to hire, the same purpose that I believe the legislation intended, but in a slightly different position. So the more flexibility we can have for that, the better for us. So that kind of covers the first one. Teacher shortages, as I said, some good strides have been made. I've heard both the governor and Speaker Cox, over the summer, talk about a goal of a long-range plan to get teacher salaries up to the national average. I don't think the Commonwealth is below average in many things, and like to think that we're leaders in the way, and hopefully that can be something that can be developed over time to get our teachers at least to that national average. Student discipline is one that I know the General Assembly has focused on. A couple of topics here, we need some assistance in terms of funding for support to prevent discipline problems and to address those discipline problems when they happen. So that can incur funding for VTSS, which is a state program, or other programs, and then some additional help in terms of alternative education for our students who aren't successful in a traditional classroom, in a traditional school setting. We, as a smaller school division, don't have a lot of resources to provide alternative education services, so having funding related to that, given some of the restrictions that have been placed on out-of-school suspensions and expulsions over the last couple of years, would be important. Student safety is the next broad topic. We've talked about the guidance counselor position, which kind of falls under here. We're doing a lot of work on social, emotional learning and wellness for our students, and thankfully, through the support of our sheriff and his department, we were able to add this year two additional school resource officers in two of our elementary schools, so that we now have four resource officers assigned, or five, including the sergeant. But four of our five schools are now covered full-time, which I think is, we've got a lot of good feedback from the community in terms of safety for that, and we appreciate the sheriff's support and the school board's support for adding some funding for that. But we do still think there's some work that could be done in that area. And then finally, is modernizing the assessment system and the SOLs. We really think the State Board of Education is making some strides in reducing demands on students that cause stress, and those SOL tests, and the number of tests, the duration of the test, and we would just ask the General Assembly to continue to support the Board of Education as they move forward to modernize our state assessment system, and that any other reductions in SOL tests, down to the minimum required by the federal legislation ESSA, would be much welcomed. That's our agenda in a nutshell, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Emo to see if there are additional comments from the board.
All right. Are there any additional comments from the school board? No? Good?
Madam Chairman, if I might-
Mr. Cole?
I just want to support and give my two cents on teacher salaries. Having been in education, as Mr. Ware, for some period of time, I'm more and more concerned and somewhat alarmed about the potential for serious teacher shortages as we move forward into the future. And, you know, there've been some efforts to help mitigate the cost of teachers being going to college, and that's appreciated, but I think, bottom line is that for many teachers who lead the profession, part of it is about the overburden of the day, but in the end, it also has to do with their compensation. And, you know, as we all know, when the economy becomes stronger and unemployment falls, our ability to attract and retain teachers is strained. And so I would support and would really like to see the legislature come up with a three-to-five-year plan of how they're going to, of moving forward with teacher increases and to get to that goal of being closer to the national average. I'm not terribly concerned that we're not exactly there, but I am concerned about a $10,000 gap. You know, once again, I'm old enough to remember when Governor Bilalz was in office, and he convinced the legislature and had consensus to raise teachers' salaries by 10% for three years. I'm not proposing that, but, you know, that was a crisis situation, but we're not far from a crisis situation right now, and it's only going to be a matter of time before something, before I think it gets worse rather than better unless we do something seriously to adjust those teacher salaries. And the adjustments with the SOQs and benchmarking certainly help in that, because, you know, right now, the locality is paying for positions that we think are essential, that the state doesn't have on their list. And we certainly, you know, in the end, I think that all of us know that a successful education is dependent on relationships that staff build with other students and what staff build with each other and their parents. And if you've got, if you don't have staff to do that, especially with those high-need students and those exceptional education students and students that might become mentally, may end up with some mental issues that calls them to act out in ways that are frightening and, quite frankly, safety concerns for all of us, unless we have those staff people in place to build those relationships, the possibilities of those things happening are increased. So I do appreciate your support. I appreciate you, you both have been very supportive of us in the past, and I just wanted to thank you for that, but at the same time, want to say to you, keep up that work and keep up the pressure, especially in terms of salaries.
Anyone else on the school board? Well, I'd like to say about the unfunded mandates, and I guess we could use the SROs for an example. We're very fortunate that the county and the sheriff's office are helping us with that. But, you know, every year when we come back to the Board of Supervisors for more things, then that means that they can't help the county in other ways. And so what we need is for the state to fund these programs, these different things that they ask us or that we do need, because the world is changing, so that we don't have to, or the Board of Supervisors then don't have to raise the taxes for the people in this county. So I just wanted to add that, and we thank you for your efforts, and that would be it from the school board. Thank you.
Let me just make, if I could make a-
I'm sorry, go right ahead.
-comment or two. One is, I was delighted this year that we could do something, the largest raise for teachers in 15 years, the state share of the 5% increase, which it's a challenge for all of us to get there, and of course, when we've got 80,000 teachers across the Commonwealth, that's a significant factor in our budget, but it's important. As Mr. Cole so eloquently said, that's how it happens. What's been interesting to me the last few years, when I've talked to the teachers' associations, is how often, in fact, each year, they have said, they've pointed to that, that you, your board, has brought to our attention, that during the Great Recession, we did cut back. It was a necessity when Governor Kane was there to, we just didn't, we didn't have it. And so they have pushed, and I know, I'm sure Senator Sturdivant would feel the same way, having been on the school board himself in Richmond, that we need to do what we can to support the support staff that work with teachers and administrators, that are indispensable to the functioning and the operation of a school. So thank you for that opportunity, and the one thing that I noticed, that I will definitely bring to the attention of the appropriators in the House, what you said about the difference between function rather than individual position title, that to me seems pretty commonsensical, and as long as we're achieving that stated goal, that makes good sense.
Thank you.
I can't, I insist from one other thing. Dr. Jones contacted my office last year about the teacher shortage, and we worked on legislation this year, and it was derivative of work at the State Superintendent's Association, and Dr. Jones brought to my attention beforehand, and it's, I think, will be a real plus in reducing unnecessary barriers to entrance to the field, and so thank you for that as well.
Thank you, sir. Yep, thanks for your support.
All right. Thank you both very much for coming out, and at this time, before we move into Item 7B, I think we can go ahead and take a brief recess. I think you might want to get scootin' home, it's a school night. So we'll take a five-minute recess.
So we'll take a five-minute recess.
I'd call this meeting of the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors and the school board back to order. We are at Item 7B, which was an addition to discuss the school CIP, the land acquisition and expansion of Powhatan High School. So Mr. Williams made that addition, so I'll let him take this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To give the audience a little bit of background information, back when we were looking at the capital improvement plan, I asked staff and with Davenport's assistance to look at the proposed projects within the five-year CIP and do the analysis of how it either comported with their debt policy of getting back down to 12% or show where it didn't. During that process, we learned that, there had been a conversation with Ted Borhees, our county administrator, and Dr. Jones where the two school projects, the addition on the high school, the 7.1 million, and the 2.5 million for land acquisition for a new elementary school, two items that have been approved by the school board that was in their CIP, had been taken out as part of this analysis. Even taking those two projects out, which totaled 9.6, it left about 18 million, I believe, in the capital improvement plan, we learned that we wouldn't get back down to 12% with those projects left in until year '28, '29. And that meant that we weren't going to be layering in any projects after the fifth year, 2024. So we had, Dr. Jones was good enough to meet with us for breakfast one morning, two members of the planning commission, Karen Carmack, the chairman, and Bill Cox, because we wanted to discuss that. And as Dr. Jones explained, you know, they had been putting in the five-year CIP projects, you know, for the purpose of telling the community, these are things that are coming down the road. And I told Dr. Jones, we had been doing the same exact thing on our side. So it wasn't anything unusual. But then I explained to him, you know, the fact that we have to plan. And so it's very important for me to know where projects are going to fall, for what amount, and how it's going to affect our debt policy, because for critical things, and the schools are our number-one customer, I want to make sure that the money is going to be there. When you guys tell me you need that school addition or you need the funds, you know, for that new elementary school for the land, it's got to be there, okay? So we had discussed as a board the feasibility or the efficacy of having a 10-year CIP. And we've asked staff and Davenport to go back and again, look at a 10-year CIP, because you don't want to just have five years of projects and then another column at the end says out-years, and it's a dark hole. So we have asked as a board for staff and Davenport to go back and look at what's out there, what projects by fiscal year in a 10-year CIP. So again, we can go back and see how they conform or don't conform with our debt policy of getting back down to 12% as soon as possible. So the reason that I asked for this discussion tonight, what better opportunity do we have? And I think we really need more of these planning types of joint meetings, not just, you know, once or twice a year. But I need to know, again, the board wants to know, what is it that's coming? And with y'all's projections, with y'all's analysis of where we're tracking, I need to know that information. So what I would like to do is to be able to determine when you're going to be able to need those things if you project forward using the current trend. It's been flat, I believe, Dr. Jones, you know, last, what, four, five years? So that's one projection. Then we've got two major rezonings on the horizon, and y'all already know how to do the projections for the schools, I mean, excuse me, for the students, the type of students, the number per household. Y'all do it similar to what other localities do.
We do.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
So what I need to do is have a second projection. If we approve these two rezonings, then how does that change, you know, y'all's need for a, you know, addition to the high school and land acquisition for a new elementary school? So it's an A-B question. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Jones or to any school board members, because that's the goal. We want to make sure that we know when you're going to need stuff, so that we can make sure that the money is going to be there, and we can choose among projects within our five, 10-year CIP to make sure that when you project that you need something, the money's going to be there.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. We appreciate that. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jones for you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Williams. We, Ms. Williams is correct. For the past seven years that I've been here, and I think for many years before that, the five-year CIP was really a vehicle for us to get out to the public and to both boards what projects we had coming up. We often did not accomplish those in five years. I don't know that we ever did. I think the bus garage was on there for 25 or 30 years.
Thirty, thirty.
And if, you know, I would certainly welcome, and, you know, with the, at the school board's pleasure, the opportunity to do a more calculated planning exercise that would be longer in duration, if that's the pleasure of both boards. And I think that we could do that. Our current trend line for enrollment has been very flat. We have September 30th as our big date to look at enrollment for this year. It's the first official number, so we'll know better what our enrollment is. It fluctuates the first month of school as students are coming in, and we're taking students off rolls that don't show up, that we thought were going to be with us. So we'll have a better idea. But we don't anticipate any large growth in enrollment this year or significant growth in enrollment, but it's too early to tell at this time. I have been working with county staff in terms of looking at the two developments that have been proposed. We've, they've been in contact with us periodically throughout the process, and we've run the numbers about how many students it would potentially yield at the end of the build-out of those two projects if they're approved. And we've given them the information that as we currently stand, that we have capacity at all of our schools to absorb those new students. And so we've given that information to county staff, and I've met with members of the planning commission on a couple occasions and came to the public hearing on those projects or the one larger project, and stated that at that meeting as well. So it would certainly put us closer to full capacity, but if our enrollment stays flat, there is certainly room within our schools for those, for those students without any major additions or new schools.
Dr. Jones, if I could ask you a follow-up question?
Sure.
If 2024 isn't the date, you know, because that's now been taken out of the five-year CIP, what is the date for the addition for the new addition?
At this point, with the current information that we have in our trend line, there is no date at this time. We're not seeing growth in enrollment, so until other projects are approved, that would cause us to adjust those numbers and to take a look at them, I can't specifically state what that date would be, because we're not seeing growth in enrollment. It's stayed essentially flat for the last four or five years. But as new projects come on and new developments happen, then certainly we would have to adjust that based on that information that we have. But until that occurs, I can't give a specific date at this time. It's something that we look at every year and something that we can update every year based on enrollment numbers, and we'll do our best to project it out as far as we can.
But essentially, what you're saying is we haven't had any growth. We've had flat-line enrollment.
Essentially, there's, it's gone up 15 students, down 15 students the last four or five years. One year, we went up like 60, and then we went down 60. So if you look at a trend line of a line graph, you would see it being essentially flat.
Okay. So we have money in the CIP within the first five years for the land acquisition, is that correct?
The school board approved a CIP that had land acquisition with a placeholder value of 2.5 million in it, and then...
What year, sorry, of the CIP?
We put 2022. But again, that was a conversation that the previous county administration and myself had about affordability of land and purchasing it earlier rather than later. We have no need for a new elementary school on the horizon that we can predict, but there was the belief that it, land's only going to become more scarce and more expensive if the current economic climate continues. So we would put that in and hopefully purchase land now rather than later if it's more expensive.
So to Mr. Williams's point, what actually triggers, are you, are you saying that we ought to go ahead and buy the land within the five years of the CIP in anticipation of something changing in the future fairly dramatically? Is that what the reasoning is?
That's what the reasoning was, is just to look at the, and weigh the pros and cons of purchasing land now versus waiting 10 years when we do need an elementary school, and I'm just throwing that figure out there. What is, what is it going to look like? Where's the availability of land and how much it's going to cost?
So it's really a placeholder and your best estimate of what might happen?
That's, that's what planning is, yes.
So can I ask a slightly different question?
Mm-hmm.
When you put together the school CIP, do you include a, an estimate of the added operational costs?
We...
Say a 2.6, let's say that's a acquisition of the land for a new elementary school in anticipation of some growth in the future. Do you also try to tell us what the increase in the operating funds would be, heating, teachers, buses, et cetera?
We have not previously. County staff asked us to take a look at that with this year's CIP, so we went back and updated specifically the high school project, since that was the largest project on the CIP, and made an estimate on, you know, if we added 11 classrooms, how many teachers would that be, what other operational costs there would be, utilities, equipment, that type of thing. So we've included that now, and if that's the wish of both boards, we can certainly include that for future projects.
So is it fair to say that the planning process between the two entities is getting further refined step by step? What, I think what Mr. Williams is after, I think he's asking a question that everybody asks, what's the total cost of whatever it is that we project and plan? So do we not call it off-guard if we approve 2.5 for land acquisition?
Right.
And in seven years, we have to build a school. Does two-year gap in there make the difference up of the 5.7 or whatever the building costs are? But we also need to plan how many extra employees we're going to have, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that's what we're pushing for, is further and further clarification and concentration of the two plans that we're putting together.
I'm confident that we can do that, Mr. Tucker, that it's, I think it's a good practice. It's one that we haven't done in the past for whatever reason, but certainly there's been more communication and trying to provide more information for both boards to consider and for the public to be aware of what those other costs may be. And we can certainly continue and have a goal of doing that for this year, whether it's a five-year CIP or a 10-year CIP, whichever the boards direct us to do.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Jones, may I ask you another question? When we met for breakfast, and we had the conversation about functional capacity and being at 92% of the high school.
Right.
Some people will understand, would you explain that, what that is, and how y'all use it in the planning process?
Yes.
Can we pass off the board? The functional, if we could pass, oh, you don't have it? Okay, go ahead.
So functional capacity is a term we use to determine what the capacity of a school is in its current configuration. So right now, in our, I'll give you an example, in our elementary schools, we have computer labs in our, in our buildings, three or four of them. We've recently updated some technology so that there's more in the classroom itself. So that could, down the road, allow us to take those computer labs out and make them classrooms. Well, that changes the capacity of the building. It's a more efficient use of the building. So what we do when we do functional capacity is we look at every space in the building and determine what it's being used for currently. And then that's the current capacity or functional capacity. We can change that functional capacity in a number of ways, how classrooms are being used. There are classrooms that sit empty during the day because teachers are on planning period or they're on duty period. You can change the schedule to allow more efficient use of that space. And certainly, you can look at functional capacity in terms of even bringing in mobile units and that type of thing, which could impact the capacity. So when we say functional capacity, that means how the building is currently being configured and used, how many students we can accommodate. And that number has some flexibility, because there are some things that we could do in reconfiguring the building to make it more efficient. If that is the need of, if there's not funding to do an addition or a new building, then that may be a stopgap measure that you can do to have more students educated in a way that is conducive to them. Does that help?
Yes, yeah. You had explained that to us, and I just want everybody to understand how y'all plan, you know, looking at, you know, that particular metric. So again, what I'm looking for, you know, from y'all, my partner in this thing, is to be able to know as soon as possible with, you know, some precision, you know, what out-year that you're going to be needing these things. Because again, I have to plan and I have to make choices about different projects. If I'm going to get into conformity with our current debt policy of getting back to 12, I have to make some decisions. And I can't do it on a year's notice, I can't do it on two years' notice. What I'm saying is, we're going to have to plan better. And you're exactly right, Dr. Jones. The way we've done and treated, you know, the CIPs on both sides of the house hasn't served us well. And there's been times where, you know, it probably really didn't matter. But today, it matters because of where we are with, you know, our debt and where we want to go with our...
want to go with our new, with our policy of getting back to 12. So I'm going to still be an advocate of the 10-year CIP because I'm a planner. I like to look at the future and, and be able to make informed choices about what things I'm going to have to do, what is nice to do, and some things that I just can't do. So thank you, Dr. Jones.
Thank you.
If I could, if, if the staff of, of the county could keep us informed as to the developments that you're getting approved so that then Dr. Jones can get back to you guys-
Absolutely.
-so we could change it.
We've got to have that communication about, you know, what we're planning for and comprehensive plans, land use, so that y'all can be a partner in the development of this county.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like to add to what Ms. Emel just said there. I think this is a great idea. If we need to get together every quarter for a while, fine. If we need to add additional ad hoc meetings onto our schedule to kind of nail this down or when things radically change, I'm fine with that, too. I think it's really good. I was just jotting some things down, you know, and thank you to the school board and Dr. Jones for being so interested in a holistic approach to these problems. So basically where we're going as a county, Dr. Jones mentioned, you know, we don't anticipate greater significant growth. And I, and thank you for acknowledging the developments that are somewhat in progress right now, but none of us know what the future holds. Tomorrow morning, somebody could drop a 500 rooftop project on us in a location in the county that's zone forward or asking for a rezoning. So this is an ongoing issue. That's what this is. We're never going to stop wrestling with this. And just so the public is, is kind of dialing in to what we're talking about, what does this look like? When we get a significant development pitched to the county, you know, as a board of supervisors, we, we think of not just the schools, we think of traffic, we think of water supply, we think of additional fire and rescue, we think of additional sheriff's office, additional county staff to run all this. On the school side, just right away, besides numbers of students in the classroom, I started thinking about new schools, additions. You mentioned trailers, which no parent seems to want introduced into their children's lives, but also buses, books, additional teachers. Thank you, Carson, for mentioning the operational side because we often overlook, gosh, you got to pay people pay and benefits. That doesn't show up in a CIP, right? That's on the operating side. So like I said, the word holistic is what we need here. And we can't do that without the two boards working together. And I jotted down basically, you know, commercial growth, commercial growth, commercial growth in a Palatine-friendly way solves a lot of our problems. Whereas residential growth unbridled adds to these problems. So we need to find that balance. A lot of that's on the supervisor's side. But in summary, if we're successful at this, we will have an extremely well-run county and a, you know, a superb school district, a champion school district made even better. If we fail to do this, I, I was thinking, okay, what happens if we fail and we don't work together and we don't look ahead? I love the 10-year idea. We're talking about higher taxes and less services for the people. That's what we're talking about. We're talking about worse education system. So in my mind, we have to do this. Thanks.
All righty, any other comments on that? Jinditem? Well, at this point, if the school board would like to go ahead and slip out. Okay, could we see if there are any comments from the board first before we, real quick? Yeah. Okay, any comments from the school board? Mr. Kunkka? Ms. Aris?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to thank everybody for agreeing to this meeting. It is very productive and I do agree that as things change, we need to stay in touch with each other and keep us informed about what the future holds. I mean, if you all are approving subdivisions, then we immediately need to know about that so we can also, you know, work out what our issues might be. And then we need to come together and work out a plan together. We need to be together more. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Kunkka?
I think there may be other paths forward that the school board should probably discuss internally, but the more meetings we can have with board of supervisors, I think the better off we are as a county.
Mr. Cole?
Just, I think we have laid a foundation for planning operational costs as we did with the new Palatine Middle School. That was information that was requested. That was information that we projected early on as a part of that. We also projected savings early on as a part of that. So, so we've begun to lay that foundation and I appreciate the opportunity to do that and to talk to folks. I, I'm all for planning and when we see needs out there, we, we do need to plan for them and we need to plan how we're going to pay for them. That's a piece of that and I think that's what Mr. Williams is giving out, getting at. I do want to just make sure that, that both boards or that the board supervisors are aware of two big cost-saving projects that we've done over the last couple of years. And, and one of those being the energy audit and then the other one being the solar, the solar project that we're embarking on. So we are doing our, and trying to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money as we move forward and just making sure that folks know that. And Jen, one last thing, and I've talked to every board a little bit about this, you know, and maybe we should have said so when, when the delegate, delegate where Mr. and Senator Stoudemire were here. Everybody pays online these days and it's fairly easy to pay online, except when it comes to making payments for my taxes, except when it comes to payment, when it comes to making payments for school supplies. And I would hope that the two boards can look together at possibility, at, at, is there a way to do this and do it economically and effectively together so that we can improve people's access and ease of making those payments, however painful they may be. If they're easier to make, it, it would be a little bit better. But, you know, right now the school system does use a product, use a vendor. It's an expensive vendor and to me it's prohibitively expensive for some people. And it seems to me that we ought to be able to get together with other localities and with the government, with, with, with local governments to figure out a way to negotiate a lawyer fee every time somebody wants to pay online. I don't like paying, you know, I pay my property taxes by check every time because I don't want to incur that service fee when I pay my property taxes. And if there's a way to mitigate that some, I can't imagine that more people wouldn't use it and it wouldn't be more cost-effective for the county in terms of staff and in terms of accounting. So that's all I have to say and thank you again for letting me in with us.
All right, and I would like to say that you can see that we're all, the school board is in favor of this. And so if you need to speak with us and make more meetings and Dr. Jones is on board with us as well, we're happy to help. Okay, and then I just, my other thing is I was wondering that this works so well that we had the joint meeting with our legislatures, if that could be a ongoing thing each year because then that way, together, we as a school board can hear what your county needs are as well as you can hear what our school board needs are together. So I would like to recommend we do that if that's possible. Sounds good. Okay, all right, well then if there's nothing else-
Madam Chair, I make a motion we adjourn. The school board adjourns.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that'll take the board of supervisors on to item 8A, which is the refunding opportunity. Are we going to hear from Charlo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, we've got Representative Griffin Moore from Davenport is here who would like to talk to us a little bit about and introduce a refunding opportunity on the 2011 and 2014 Virginia Resources Authority pooled bond issue that we have in the money right now, apparently. So Griffin, we've actually moved our podium over there.
But he wants to-
But I know you've got some exhibits for us and board members, this is kind of a, you know, in-progress item. So if you want an electronic copy of this, it is in your board pack for Monday.
Thank you to the members of the board for your time tonight. Purpose of my presentation this evening is to bring you up to speed on a few refinancing opportunities that we at Davenport have identified. And over the past several weeks, we've worked with, my colleague Kyle Lox and I have worked with county administrator, finance director, the county's bond counsel, T.W. Bruno Maguire Woods, and the Virginia Resources Authority to put the county in a position and reserve a spot for the county in VRA's upcoming financing pool in order to take advantage of a potential opportunity to refinance two outstanding loans that the county previously issued through VRA's pooled financing program. In general, over the past year or so, interest rates have come down substantially. So at this point in time, under current market conditions, it, it appears that the county may be in a position to reduce the interest rate on these financings and ultimately reduce their annual debt service payments. So at tonight's meeting, we want to introduce these refinancing opportunities and also introduce two resolutions that would put the county in a position to take advantage of those opportunities when and if market conditions align when VRA prices its bonds in late October. So I'm going to switch to page one of this presentation. As you know, as financial advisor of the county, Davenport monitors the county's debt profile for potential refinancing opportunities. Over the past 10 years or so, the county has done six refinancings totaling eight and a half million dollars of savings. Most recently, earlier this summer, late spring, the county completed a refinancing for 2.3 million dollars of savings. This is a different opportunity. And on page two, there are two graphs, both of which show historical trends of the 10-year U.S. Treasury rate. And the Treasury rate acts as an indicator of market interest rates in general. And as you can see in the bottom left, from 2000, the 10-year Treasury started at about 7% and has since declined over time to roughly the 2% range. On the right-hand side, so the takeaway from there is rates are near historical lows, particularly over the last 20 years. And on the right-hand side, you'll see that from about September 2018, a year ago, the 10-year Treasury decreased from 3%, down to 1.5% range a couple of weeks ago and back up to the sub 2%, around 1.8% today. So rates have fallen relatively quickly over the past year, but also another important takeaway is that the rates have been very volatile as well. So just in the past month, rates have gone from 2% all the way down to 1.5. They've bounced back up to 1.8. So again, rates are near historical lows, but they move quickly up and down and there's no way to guarantee where rates will be in the future. So the two loans in question are the 2011B and the 2014C VRA financings, both of which were refinancings themselves. And they refinanced debt that the county had issued for water and sewer capital projects. And together, those two loans saved the county $2 million. If you take your eye to the table at the bottom of the page, there's about 11.8 million dollars of these loans that are callable and eligible to be refinanced. And the average rate on the 2011B bonds is 4.78% and the average rate on the 2014C bonds is 4.24%. So based on current market conditions, we think that the county could potentially be able to reduce those interest rates. And when we look at refinancings, we look at four factors that determine how successful those refinancings could be. The first is the most important and that is long-term interest rates. A variety of other factors play into it such as the time until final maturity of the financing, the length of time until the next available call date, which is the date when you can prepay those financings, and also short-term interest rates. But again, the most important is long-term interest rates and at this time, that variable is in the county's favor. So since these two loans were issued through VRA's pooled financing program, the quickest way to market, given the credit structure, which is water and sewer revenue pledge for a portion and also a portion of the loans are secured by a, a lien on a wastewater treatment plant. So given those credit considerations, the upcoming VRA pool is the fastest, most efficient way to get into the market and potentially lock in some long-term fixed interest rates and hopefully reduce the interest rates on these loans. On page five, we have some tables that show estimates of the refinancing results under current market conditions, and that's the table at the top, and under a scenario where interest rates rose by roughly 25 basis points. And that's the table on the bottom. So if you look at the top, the estimated savings based on current market conditions is a total of $968,000. And the 2014C bonds are shown in that gray box because based on current conditions, they're estimated to produce 1.0% savings on a present value basis. That's that number in the far right column. And in the resolutions that are being introduced tonight, there is a minimum savings parameter of 3%. So the refinancing would not occur unless the bonds that were refunded produced at least 3.3% savings. So in short, the 2014C bonds would not be included at this time. But VRA does not price its bonds until late October, so there's still time to, where we'll monitor interest rates. Rates could fall, rates could go up, but at this time, the refinancing would consist of just the 2011B bonds with the possibility to add the 14Cs back in. Okay, so finally, at tonight's meeting, we're just, we're bringing you up to speed on the refinancing opportunities and introducing two resolutions. The first of which, number one, would authorize the county to participate in the fall VRA pool to refinance the portion of the 11B bonds and the 14C bonds that are secured by a pledge of water and sewer revenues. And number two, the second resolution would authorize the county to move forward with a refinancing of the portion of the bonds that are secured by the wastewater treatment plant. And an important condition is that the refinancing would only occur if the 3% minimum savings threshold was met. So in summary, the board has the adoption, the option to consider and adopt the resolutions at tonight's meeting if you so desire and if you'd like more time to look at it. The board could also move these items to the agenda for the Monday meeting on the 23rd. And under the current schedule, VRA will price its bonds in late October. So rates will move from, for the next six weeks. We'll work with county staff and VRA to monitor those rates and see which portions of the bonds or the full thing could produce 3% savings. But October 30th is tentatively the date when rates would be locked in and the closing would occur in mid-November if the refinancing is successful. So at this time, I'm happy to take any questions.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
So again, I'll ask the question I've always asked, why wouldn't we do this?
So again, I'll ask the question I've always asked, why wouldn't we do this? This is a net savings to the county. The risk doesn't seem to be appreciable. What would talk us out of doing it?
I don't see any reason not to. The way the resolutions are written, the county is not obligated to move forward with a refinancing if it doesn't meet the 3% savings parameter. And if it does meet the savings parameter, it would be a cost savings to the county. So it is...
Let me build on Mr. Tucker's question. Is there a risk? Given your resolution, is there a risk? And if it is, what is it?
I don't believe so. No.
Yes, sir.
Question. Carson, I also wrote down downside, question mark. That was the first thing I wrote down. I got a couple of questions, and some of these are for the benefit of people, you know, the public watching on live stream or whatever, just so they have a clear understanding of this, and a couple of them are for me. So our annual payment total will go down, correct?
Yes, in the event of a successful refinancing.
Because there's a lot of people that have a car and they refinance, or a house they refinance, okay? Total amount paid, what happens to the total amount paid?
The total amount paid would also go down. And while we're on this question, I would like to confirm one thing that I didn't mention yet, but there would be no extension of the final maturity. So the goal of the refinancing would be to keep the final maturity the same and simply lower the payments every year. No extension of maturity.
So that was where I was going for a question for me, because we just discussed, as you sat here and listened, possibility of going to a 10-year out plan. And the only downside that I was thinking of was if it lengthened the payments into other out years that we weren't planning on, then that would be one more layer where we might be planning on paying for a school edition or whatnot. So there is that consideration. So that's not going to be an issue.
That is correct.
Wow, that's great. I'm getting happier with every answer to these questions. Thanks. And how about prepayment penalty? I think you said it, and I think it's in here. It does get reset, correct?
That is correct. Typically, VRA's bonds are similar to the majority of bonds in the, or the typical bond in the public market has a 10-year call...
Yeah, they're not going to let you refinance and then turn around, and 18 months later, you're out of there. Yeah, I get it. Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
So I guess the next obvious question is if you all would like to take this to a vote tonight. I would suggest that we wait until Monday night. I think that's always prudent. Gives people some time to reflect and the public some time to comment. It does seem like a pretty good idea to do, but I don't want to assume anything. So I would suggest that we move forward to Monday unless somebody has a compelling reason not to do so.
I'm okay with that.
Because it's so close.
I'm okay.
Yeah, three days.
Doing it tonight get us anything?
No.
Does doing it on Monday night hurt us in any way?
No.
Okay. All right. So then we'll just thank you for this, and we'll share this information with Mr. Melton. He'll be here Monday night. We'll be prepared to vote at that time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just ask, would the Board like to invite Griffin and his team to be at the meeting? Or have we answered sufficient questions? That'd be the one thing that he won't admit to, but it would disadvantage him and that he'd have to make another trip.
Happy to be here.
I'm sure you are, but I think that we would be, we'd be okay. Perhaps if we have any questions, we could email or...
No. Let me raise a concern I have, just in case somebody comes down and public comment, and they raise an issue, you know, we need somebody knowledgeable here to be able to address...
Well, come on out.
I was gonna...
It won't be painful.
Okay. I think it's important for the public to have a chance. I don't think we should do anything with this tonight. And also, Mr. Melton, I think, should be here and have the chance to look this over and give input.
Ask questions.
Yep. So, sorry about that. I don't know who's playing Monday night, but we are.
It's an opportunity to take advantage of our fine restaurants.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right, that takes us on to item 8B, the discussion of the broadband strategic plan found on page 21.
And Madam Chair, this item was requested by supervisors Williams and Tucker. So we had a meeting with Mr. Biku from Broadband Telecom LLC who prepared our USDA Reconnect grant application. He was invited by those supervisors to have some more discussion, kind of a learning opportunity about what next steps might be. He brought with him an unsolicited proposal to prepare a detailed strategic plan, a master plan, if you will, for how the county might go about building a broadband network if it were to choose to build it itself. So that document was distributed to board members in your mail and referenced this evening for discussion. So with that, I will invite the supervisors who asked to put it on here to lead the discussion, and I'd be happy to, you know, provide comments at the appropriate time.
When Carson and I met with staff and Mr. Biku, we were basically looking for more information, recommendations. We really weren't expecting this type of proposal, at least I wasn't, I'm not going to speak for Mr. Tucker, one that entailed the expenditure of, I believe, $95,000 for this plan. After reflection, I'm going to be very circumspect about going forward with any vendor as a sole source and not looking out to other folks for guidance, because you, there's several risks, multiple risks, when you do it this way. One of the main concerns that I have at this point is that we don't have a good feel of what's possible out there in the universe of broadband. So one of the reasons tonight I put on the agenda a conversation with Dr. Christopher Ali, the professor who was part of Congresswoman Spanberger's panel when she did her broadband town hall meeting. I talked to Ted about this, and Ted said the same thing that my colleagues said about this gentleman. He was the star on the panel. He was certainly the star up in UVA when Bill Cox, who set up the meeting, because he had attended that town hall meeting, and he recognized the potential that this gentleman had for helping us. At his invitation, Karen Karmack attended, Mike Barley attended, I attended, and we spent approximately an hour and a half with this gentleman. And very quickly, I found out I don't know what I don't know. He is very conversant in what's going on in the world of broadband across the country. He's even coming out with a book on the subject. So we learned a great deal. I would highly recommend, and I urge you, let's send an invitation to this gentleman, have him come down. You're going to be very impressed. We will learn things that will help us in the decision-making process as we go forward with our desire to have some type of path forward, as Carson says. So he's basically willing to come down and have that conversation. We're looking at the neighborhood of him coming down and having that meeting with us. If we spend a couple of hours with him, we can do a couple of things. It's going to cost approximately, to cover his expenses, approximately $600. That's going to be money well spent, because out of that conversation that we can have with the planning commission, board members, and staff, we can make a determination, a better determination about how we want to approach broadband in this county. Again, he has a wide range of expertise and knowledge that I think will help us focus better on what it is and what it is that we should be doing going forward. So that's going to be my recommendation. I have his email proposal to us, you know, where he outlines different options about what he can do. You know, he can come down for the whole day. Of course, that'll cost more. But my recommendation would be, start off with a two-hour meeting, and then from there, you know, we can make some determinations about where we want to go after that meeting.
So I think we segued pretty quickly into 8C.
Yeah.
Mr. Tucker, would you like to say anything about 8B before we move on to 8C?
Only given that increasingly we recognize the chaotic nature of what's going on or what's unfolding around the broadband issues across the Commonwealth. I'd like to suggest that we do what Mr. Williams is asking for, because we don't know a whole lot about what we don't know a whole lot about. And if this guy is as good as staff says he is and as participants that went to his session in Charlottesville, right?
It was in, I believe it was in Louisa.
General.
Louisa.
Yep.
Says he is. It's another, it's another opportunity for us to learn what is available, what we might be able to do. I like to suggest that we not only have the Board of Supervisors attend, but the Planning Commission attend, the Broadband Committee to attend, and certainly our IT staff folks to attend this, particularly the first session. And I hadn't thought about what Mr. Williams suggested of having a two-hour looksee and then make a determination whether we proceed to a longer session with him at some time in the future. So I endorse Mr. Williams' suggestion.
And the reason, Madam Chair, that I went to, you know, the recommendation was because I was explaining the reason why I didn't want to go with the recommend, or excuse me, with, you know, the proposed plan with Mr. Biku at this time.
Could you share with us the email we're outlining in the proposal?
Yeah.
And...
Yep.
So we could take a look at that and...
Yeah, I meant to give a little bit more of the...
So can we put this on, can we amend to... So I'm sorry, Mr. Williams, I don't see $600 on here. I see $3,000.
Well, he says, in my conversation with, it was $100 in one hour conversation. I believe he said it was around $500, so we can, I can refine, I can get another email and drill down with what he told me.
Madam Chair, we can also talk about a maximum amount that we're willing to pay for, you know, such and such a service. We can talk about that tonight.
Yeah.
The $3,000, yeah, that caught my attention.
He basically charges, he basically charges, is what he shared with me in the telephone conversation. It was $100 an hour, and plus his, plus his expenses. I can, I can get that, pull that information and send it to the Board and to staff. And again, we can vote on it Monday night. I can get refined figures. Not a problem.
Okay. That, I think, I think that'd be best to put it to Monday night. I'm wondering, if we go to him, is it free? So he spoke with you all once for no cost?
No, I mean, no. For him to come down here, he told me he would have to charge expenses. His normal consulting is $100 an hour. So with his time, travel, I think, you know, we came up with, you know, as a figure, and again, I can get a hard figure if that's what it takes. But what we're looking for is that conversation to get us focused. That's what I'm looking for.
All right. So then we'll, you'll make a motion to amend the agenda on Monday night to include this discussion.
Yes, and in between, I'll call Chris, Dr. Ali, and ask him to send me another email, you know, summarizing his expenses for a two-hour conversation with us and the county to include all the people. I liked Carson's suggestion about who should be included in that conversation.
All righty.
Madam Chair, I'd like to add one thing. I think it's a good idea to take this, kind of baby steps into this, because we jumped feet-first. I think you were talking about that, Mr. Tucker. You know, with, with our most recent round of experience with trying to get broadband into the county, we really, really do want to get broadband here, but I think we need to take the go-slow approach. And I know Mr. Voorhees and I have discussed this, but there are many people in the Commonwealth and the Mid-Atlantic region who will come up with a quote-unquote "plan" to get broadband into your locality. Some charge $50,000, some charge $90,000, some charge $100,000. There are, in my opinion, some opportunists, and I'm using a polite word, there are some opportunists that are making a fistful of cash by coming up with a broadband plan for your locality. Unfortunately, they don't talk to the Internet service provider first, the company that's going to come in and actually dig in the ground or climb the tower. And the plan may not match at all what the provider is willing to do or even can do. So you can waste a lot of money on a plan that eventually will be thrown into the shredder and recycled. We need to talk to him about things like 5G and above, that's the way of the future, satellite, high-speed broadband, which is becoming more and more a thing. China's pursuing that. What we don't want to do is get a plan on how to build a dinosaur, because this technology changes lightning fast. And I think it would be of great benefit to ask those kind of questions to an expert in the field who's writing a book and evidently is fairly impressive in person. So I highly recommend we pay this little bit of seed corn instead of go the route of many localities and get financially caught in this web. Obviously, with our past experience, I think that's the direction we need to go.
I'm sitting here laughing, I'm looking at the email engine. I know what happened. If you look over in the left-hand margin, AOL printed out the menu, which truncated the right margin, and left off the amounts that he's, it's in there. I'll just have to resend it to you.
Yes, sir. All right. That takes us on to our final public comment period, and if anybody has any comments, please come on down. Seeing none, we'll move into county administrator comments.
I just wanted to acknowledge the community's participation in the 9/11 remembrance on Patriot Day last week. I was really, really proud of our employees, our students at Powhatan High School, our fire and rescue and other first responder personnel who participated in the memorial walk-run or run-walk event. It was just really tremendous showing and great community camaraderie, and also a great way to sort of, you know, connect our next generation with something that is very, you know, personally memorable to us. But, you know, it's hard to imagine, they were not even born when 9/11 occurred. And to have so many students come out there and, and young fire rescue volunteers participate, I thought that was a great way to do it.
Thank you. Board member comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Rusty Holland definitely is the man of the match in Powhatan County to do what he did. I just can't imagine how he accomplished what he did, and at the same time, brought attention to what happened and raised money for this county for the volunteers. It doesn't get any better than that, so hats off to Rusty. Also, I would like to recommend that we have a workshop as soon as possible to address how we're going to plan for a long-term water supply for this county, being as we're no longer in Cops Creek, and today we only have 372,000 gallons that we get from Chesterfield. We get 572 from Chesterfield, but we're using 200, so that means our long-term water supply now is down to 372,000 gallons. Similarly, I would like to have discussed at the workshop, we have... Similarly, I would like to have discussed at the workshop, we have given this as a priority and discussed it with the county administrator, about bringing in Tetrapolis. I'm not sure where we are with that, but that's something I thought we had agreed to do. Also, we said, once we pass the comprehensive plan, we would contract for a transportation plan for this county that reflected the land use decisions that we had made in the comprehensive plan. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Nordvig?
A couple of things. When y'all brought up the 9/11, they, really, what you said, David, Russ Holland Jr., wow, that's all I can say. It's unbelievable, and if you weren't there, I'll just give you a little vignette. I ran a couple laps in my work clothes, and then I came back later because Russ asked, he said, "Would you run the last lap with me?" And I thought, wow, that, you can't turn that down. So, myself and my 22-year-old son showed up, and we had our jogging stuff on, and I said to my 22-year-old, "You watch, on the last lap, he's going to put a kick in, and he's going to just blaze around the track and leave me in the dust." And about halfway around the track, there he goes. He put in a kick. I mean, 343 laps, this is 85 and 3/4 miles, running from midnight till almost 8:00 PM when we finished, and he put a kick in at the end, and I could not keep up with him. That guy is amazing on many levels. Okay, so there's one. The other one is, thanks to First Independent Baptist Church, they had an appreciation day for elected officials on Sunday morning. We were invited to the service. I know Brad Nunley was there, Ms. Emo was there, there were, there were a few of us there, and just want to publicly say thank you. You know, nothing special. They just wanted to know that they care about us, then they're praying for us, and we had a nice supper afterwards, and it was just a very nice event. So, I encourage everybody, if you get a chance to do that in the community, that really goes a long way. And the last thing is, unfortunately, we had a, sort of a spike in DUIs this past weekend. And I would ask two things. For one, if you are a parent or caregiver, tell your kids to not drink and drive. Tell them for the 100th time. The other one is, you know, you yourselves, the driving public, be careful when you're talking about alcohol and driving. Make sure you have a designated driver. We don't have Uber out here, so do that. And lastly, watch your comments, please, on social media when a tragedy occurs. There's a time to try to figure out the whys and what-fors and maybe what could have done better, but shortly after a personal tragedy, it's time just to give comfort to those in need of. Thanks.
All right. Meeting adjourned.
At 8:13.